I'm calling the April Council meeting.
Roopah.
Peterson.
Here.
Krupsek.
Yeah.
Shemansky.
Here.
Woyak.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Wenzel.
Here.
I'm here, G- Kuhn.
Here.
First on the agenda is last month's minutes. There's a motion, a second to approve the March minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Next is Treasury report. There's a motion, a second to approve the Treasury report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Citizens Forum. People that would like to address the council. Heather, you're up.
Oh, hi me. Hello. My name is Tanya Amis and I'm here representing Healthy People Nacusa Coalition. I just wanted to share a little bit about who we are. A couple of years ago, Healthy People Nacusa was started as a branch of Healthy People Wood County in response to the suicides that have happened in our community to spread mental health awareness and do some suicide prevention. So over the last couple of years, we've had some community activities and this year we have partnered with UCC Church to do a block party per se and we're calling it Swift Water Spring Fling. And so we had heard Pastor Tim has been part of the coalition in the past and he discussed that the church was thinking about it and we were already thinking Motor Plus Healthy People has done a 5K, this will be the second year doing a 5K, so now we've attached this block party to the 5K that's happening on May 21st. So we're here to tell you a little bit about it, what our hopes are for the event and request permission for using Thompson Park for a DJ and possibly food down there, bleachers in the area, probably in the parking lot of the bank. And the other part was having a booth for different vendors to be set up along those sidewalks. So we're looking from UCC down to Thompson Park and the businesses in between, we're trying to engage the businesses as well to be involved. The purpose of this is to bring the community together. So we want parents and their childrens or childrens.
Children?
I was gonna mess up somewhere. So just bring the children, just bring our community members together to have a good time, to have fun. The church is gonna have some food, the student council is gonna raise some money after the 5K with some food. So again, just kind of bringing everybody together and having a good time, 11 to 2 on a Saturday morning. So we also are partnering with Party Animal, they're a big part of it.
That's why I'm sitting here.
Right, right. And so we wanted to have, do you want to talk about Europe, please? We have a bike parade for children that we want to do from the church down to Thompson Park. So we're looking for ideas too, as far as the safest way to get those children down there. And then we're going to have a blessing of the bikes, the motorcycles and the children's bikes and then a send off.
Let's see. As far as the bicycle parade, I think you had talked with Sean about it specifically. Was there a specific route? I don't know if that was the parade, that wasn't necessarily the parade. The parade was something, another route around Goodfellas, I believe, headed towards, was it Riverside Park, I want to say. I don't know exactly what the route was, but I believe that they had talked about that route with Sean. So it doesn't have anything to do with Market Street per se. But when we were at a meeting one, two Mondays, two Mondays ago, we had talked about the possibility of tying the bikes together, you know, whether it be motorcycles or bicycles, just to kind of bring those two worlds together for the kids and then for the people that are riding. But we do an event, obviously you guys know, once a year. And we were thinking about doing a spring ride, we were trying to figure out a date we were gonna do that. And a ride is just, we did it last year for fall, it was nothing huge, it was just, you know, getting people to come out and kind of enjoy the end of the season. Well, we're gonna do a spring ride and they came to us and said, hey, we want to do this on the 21st. It's like, ah, sounds like a good day for our spring ride. So we're gonna tie that together and then Pastor Tim had mentioned, why don't we do a bike blessing? He wanted to do a bike blessing and do it for not only the kids, but for the adults bringing their bikes to go on the spring ride. So it sounded like a really good idea. And that's where the DJ comes in in Thompson Park, is he'll have speakers then to be able to kind of announce his voice to whether the kids in the parking lot for the Nacusa State Bank or the motorcyclists, which are probably gathered within that park so that everybody can hear them. That was kind of the idea behind the DJ thing. But what we'd like to do then is we're gonna be heading out with the motorcycles at about 2:30, kickstands up roughly, to head out of town, which would be taking us over the bridge. We're gonna go towards the Plainfield area and roughly about 100 mile ride, but none of that necessarily matters, I guess. The portion of the ride out of Nacusa, we had mentioned to Sean, you guys have done some work with other rides that have come through just to make sure that everybody stays together as they leave or whatever the case may be there. I think a couple of traveling across that bridge coming this way to Foley's, I think you guys have done some work. And Sean had brought that up. He thought that that would be, you know, something that he'd be willing to do to help us, get everybody out on one, in one bunch, I guess. And that's gonna bring a lot of rides with a, with a lot of people that are interested in the bike blessing, that's a great idea. So that's gonna build that spring ride to something that should be pretty substantial. Now, on the kids' side of things, the kids, not the parade, but the kids are trying to bring their bikes from the church parking lot where the end of the parade will be, with the bike parade that they're trying to put on that's off of Market Street, has nothing to do with the main street, to bring that down to Thompson Park so that the kids can have their bikes in that parking lot. But depending on the amount of kids, it's gonna be difficult to get them to go down the sidewalk, you know, we run kids next to each other, trying to, I guess, get there before the next one, so bumping into each other or whatever, you're talking a sidewalk, maybe three bikes wide, multi, you know, bicycles. And we thought that maybe in that same timeframe, if we do the bike blessing at about 2, we'd like to be able to have the kids be able to go from the church to the parking lot with the help of, you know, the traffic stop for the few minutes that it would take them to get there. Basically the same situation as getting the bikes out of town, you know, it'd be a five, six minute, you know, interval there to be able to get them safely down to Thompson Park to be able to hear the bike blessing. So it's not a parade, it's just them being able to get there safely and not have to like wrestle each other on the, along the skinny sidewalk. And that was where we thought maybe it would be a good idea to bring, you know, the same aspect of stopping the traffic for the bikes to be able to leave, is stopping the traffic for the kids to get to Thompson Park for that bike blessing. And I think that's the whole gist of, I guess, our side of it. The bikes, we're bringing them in for a spring ride, we thought it was a good idea, they've got some great ideas with bringing the Nacusa together as far as the businesses go and all that, so that's kind of how we tied in. That's about it for me, I guess.
So what's the date on this?
May 21st. We have flyers. Yeah, I don't have a lot of them, but I did print out, it's just a mock-up of what we're doing and assuming that there'll be quite a few changes based on, back to, based on whatever you guys decide, it will be changed. And one thing that wasn't mentioned is we will be having free children's games down at the United Church of Christ in their grass area, right in front of the, by the bridge area. So that'll bring a lot of kids down to that area as well. And we have it fenced off for safety. Yeah, we've already talked to them. Set that up.
So are you looking for us, are you looking for us to approve?
Do we need, do we need to have permission to use Thompson Park or are we allowed to use it?
You need permission to use Thompson Park.
Okay. Would please be given permission.
But you put UCC Church parking lot in here too and I, it just, my mind snapped to the Catholic Church parking lot, that's the one that we, basically we own that one. We don't own UCC, you guys have to.
No, we have permission from the church, they're working with us, they're partnering with us on that. Pastor Tim is.
I'm gonna make a motion to allow the Healthy People Nacusa use of the church Thompson Park, Park area for Swift Water Spring Fling, May 21, 2016.
Second. And any other coordinations with Sean, I mean, you guys can work that out.
Okay. What about having vendor booths on, are there restrictions on the sidewalks to bring outside vendors and to utilize some of the empty spaces in our empty, you know, in front of our empty buildings?
I think we gotta do that through your department there.
Yeah, if you want to talk to, you know, the other possible place would be the parking lot between the daycare and the bank.
That's the, that's the, both of them are owned by the bank. Generally with the drive.
The bank owns part of that one, we own the other part of it.
Oh, okay. The other, oh, you mean Thompson Park, that one?
No, the parking lot between the daycare center.
Oh, okay, so the daycare doesn't own the other half?
No.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, I've got you. So we would just need to talk to the bank, but you guys would be all right with that?
Yeah, it's a Saturday and it wouldn't be anything going on and, you know, the only issue might be the drive-through at the bank, I don't know if they're open.
That was where the other, the Thompson Park parking lot without the drive-through, that's why we have always utilized that for our event instead of asking about the other one, just for the case of the people driving through the drive-through, you're not interrupting them in any way. He had mentioned, I had talked to Rob countless times in the past and he had mentioned that, that that's consideration that people are gonna be coming around.
Possible sidewalk from, I guess from the old clockhouse.
Yeah, they have drive-throughs on the backside.
On that side, there's no, there's, you know, there's nothing on the sidewalk from.
I just wasn't sure if there were city restrictions on how to utilize the park.
We can look that up too and I'm not sure.
I just don't want to do something and then you guys come back and say, no.
I don't agree because, I mean, you're usually at the flea market and stuff like that down there.
Yeah, that's what I remember when I was a kid.
Instead of, it's all corners, so I had to rule.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a corner. It's a good corner.
I mean, yeah.
We just wanted to make sure that we came and presented this to you, so if there was something that we needed to ask permission about, we covered all of our bases.
Just the corner.
Okay. All right. And that you're aware so that you can join us. Wow, that would be great.
Anything to add from the police department as far as what we had mentioned, because...
Well, you went and talked with Sean, I don't know what he's said, I was just in my head thinking, you know, you're gonna bring the bikes, bicycles from UCC to Thompson Park and then try to get them back?
No, no.
No, then their parents would just.
No, then they would just leave from there, once everything's over, there wouldn't be them coming back, it would just be the way there for them.
Yeah, and then they would park it and then their parents would pick them up.
What about blocking off the parking stalls along that side of the road for that day and just let them use the parking stalls right down the parking stalls?
It's just a traffic thing though, that's the part that killed me, you know, they had talked about the one lane, but kids aren't, I don't know if you'd want kids driving down the parking lanes, you know, and then have traffic right next to them, that's a little...
I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, that's right, we only use it through that for pre, don't have to take it.
Well, the other option would be the alley.
Yeah, but that's kind of cheesy.
Yeah, I think you want to see them by the businesses, but if you're gonna set up booths, you know, then you're restricting where they're gonna be driving.
Yeah.
So we'll figure it out.
I think, I think the thing that Sean was most adamant about would be, there was a question that if it did grow to a size, now this year wouldn't be that case, but if it did grow to size, the situation with the possibility of shutting down the state highway for any period of time. Now, that being said, this isn't what was being asked, it may be for the future, but not what's being asked right now because it's not to that scale yet. Right now it would be just the intermittent traffic to be able to allow the bikes to leave and the bikes to come. The bicycles to come, the bikes to leave, motorcycles. And then basically it would be a five-minute thing. He, I think, was most under the impression that it was like closing the street for an extended period of time, whether it be a 20-minute or a half hour, that's a little extreme, that doesn't need to happen.
Right, and you have to get state permission.
Exactly.
We're aware of that.
I think we got a motion, a second to approve the use of Thompson Park, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much for having us. Thanks for your time.
Okay, going on, two committee reports, first is Ways and Means.
Can I make a quick note real quick, just for someone on their calendars? We've talked about our middle of the summer event and we've got a date nailed down for it, so if anybody wants to put a note down, it'll be July 23rd, the fourth weekend in July, is what we're looking at this year. Obviously the same festivities that we normally partake in, Thompson Park is one of them. We'll address that with you guys again, but just as a kind of a heads up for that event that we do, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. If you work something.
Ways and Means has one meeting to report on, I move to accept the minutes as written.
There's a motion, a second to approve the Ways and Means minutes as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, a Ways and Means meeting was held on Tuesday, April 12th at 6:15 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Emmett Peterson, Chairperson, Terry Shemansky, Secretary, Garrett Kuhn, Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Brad Hamilton, August Woyak, Larry Krupsek, Robert Wenzel, Bobby Hertzberg, Brad Hamilton, and Mayor Al Marco. Number one, we recommend a $1,000 donation to River Cities Access. Item number two, we audited the bills. Item number three, we recommended approval of eight license applications for beverage operators. The names were Jesse Gachell, Tammy Saylor, Ann Sager, Aaron Larson, Laura Hart, Amanda Webb, James Porter, and Candace Burhite. Number four, we recommend sending Bobby Hertzberg to Municipal Treasures Spring Conference, April 21 and 22 in Appleton, per handbook.
Aye. Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, Public Works Meeting was held on Tuesday, April 5th, 2016 at 4:00 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Terry Shemansky, Robert Schultz, and Garrett Kuhn. Also in attendance were August Woyak and Alan Harnish from the DPW. Item one, discuss ordinance for removal of salvageable non-structural materials from vacated buildings. Item two, discuss the grant request from Domtar. Item three, discuss one-time credit for water sewer leaks. Item four, discuss summer hire policy. Item five, discuss contract for recycling with advanced recycling. Item six, discuss Point Bass Avenue project. Item seven, recommend sending two DPW employees to Biological Treatment School for three days in Madison, per employee handbook. Questions? If not, I move to adopt item seven.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve item seven of the Public Works Report.
Krupsek.
Yes.
Woyak.
Yes.
Shemansky.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Peterson.
Next is Public Safety.
Public Safety, two meetings, move for the minutes to be accepted as read.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve the minutes of both Public Safety minutes as read, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, Public Safety Meeting was held on Thursday, March 31st, 2016 at 4:30 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Terry Shemansky, Chairperson, Brad Hamilton, Secretary, Larry Krupsek, and August Woyak. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Ambulance Chief Don Harnish, Assistant Chief Ken Moody, and candidates for the ambulance, for captain's position. Moved by Hamilton, psyched by Krupsek, Kuhn calls session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.8131C to interview candidates for captain. All members voted yes. Moved by Woyak, second by Hamilton, going to open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.852 to make record based on matter discussed at closed session. All members voted yes. Number one, recommend Mark Myers for ambulance captains. Any questions? Make a motion, not a. Number one.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve item one of the March 31st Public Safety Report. Roopah. Yes.
Shemansky.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
I go, yes. Kuhn.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Yes.
The Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, Public Safety Meeting was held Tuesday, April 5th, 2016 at 5:00 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Terry Shemansky, Chairperson, Larry Krupsek, Secretary, Robert Wenzel, Garrett Kuhn. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Ambulance Chief Don Harnish, Assistant Chief Ken Moody, Fire Chief White Hart, Assistant Fire Chief Dave Reinhardt, August Woyak, and Bob Schultz. Number one, discuss ambulance billing rates. Number two, discuss captain's position on ambulance department. Number three, discuss ambulance Reynolds Blackbird, Blackbird Falls Fire Department. Number four, discuss damage to ambulance 338 from hitting a goose. Number five, discuss study timeframe for meetings with the, and I request to discuss the 2017 retainer. Any questions? No action taken.
Next is Property Recreation and Human Affairs.
Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Council, Property Recreation and Human Affairs had one meeting, we made a motion to accept that as printed.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve the Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee Minutes as printed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Property Recreation and Human Affairs Meeting was held on Wednesday, April 7th, 2016 at 5:15 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Chairperson, Emmett Peterson, Secretary, August Woyak, Garrett Kuhn. Also in attendance were Police Chiefs Sean Woods, Mayor Al Marco, Public Works Director Alan Schmidt, Rick Allen, Alan, Rick Schmidt, Jim Martin, Jim Martin II the second, and Lord Laurie Anderson, Bill Warner, Cal Zanzel, Dave Smith, and Robert Schultz. Number one, discuss comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Number two, discuss future gun shop downtown Nacusa. Number three, discuss skate park, tentative date, start date for construction is June 1st, 2016. Number four, discuss buying cemetery plot back from Stensburg family, cost would be 75% original price. Number five, discuss cemetery plan update. Number six, discuss applying for a grant from Domtar to be used for upgrading the actual drainage of the old Riverside Park. Number seven, discuss having Arbor Day celebration, American Transmission Company pledged $250 for the celebration. Number eight, discuss banners for light poles. Number nine, discuss safety center billing code updates. Number 10, discuss flash pad. Number 11, discuss billing grants from city. Number 12, recommend buying six new planters along Market Street and other areas. Number 13, recommend sponsoring all three dinner in the park events for total cost of $750. Make a motion to accept, what does that do, number four, or that's kind of?
No. That's in the rules. 12, 13.
Okay. Make a motion to accept number 12 and 13.
There's a motion, a second to approve items 12 to 13 of Property Recreation and Human Affairs Report. Roopah.
Shemansky.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Krupsek.
Yes.
And Woyak.
Yes. Is wage and salary?
Yeah, wage and salary had one meeting this month, I move to approve the, as presented.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve wage and salary minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, Wage and Salary Meeting was held Tuesday, April 5th, 2016 at 6:30 PM in the Nacusa Council Chamber. Members present were Brad Hamilton, Larry Krupsek, August Woyak, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Alan Harnish, DPW, and Mayor Al Marco. Moved by Schultz, second by Woyak, for Committee going to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851C to review public work direction, excuse me, public work director's probationary status, all members voted yes. Moved by Schultz, second by Woyak, to go into open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.852 to make possible recommendations when it is discussed in closed session, all members voted yes. Item one, recommend ending probationary period for the public works director. Item two, recommend deleting final bullet point under hours section of the city handbook. And item three, recommend change to section 12, bullet points one and three. Anybody have any questions? I move for adoption items one, two, and three.
There's a motion, a second to approve items one, two, and three, the wage and salary Committee Report. Roopah.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
I go, yes.
Kuhn. Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Krupsek.
Yep.
Woyak.
Yes.
Shemansky.
Yes. Anybody have anything for old business? Going into new business, first thing we've got, Don handed out the updated proposed rates for ambulance billing, we discussed this a few months back, he just got the current proposed updates a couple hours ago. We've had a little bit of time to look them over, if we're okay with the numbers, we can go ahead and approve tonight, otherwise we'd have to hold them back until the May Public Safety Minute meeting. What they did is they go back three years, average all the runs based on the descriptions of the calls and do the proposed increase on them. Like Brad said, some kind of funky little numbers on there, but that's what they're, but that's what they're recommending, so.
I would make a motion to approve the.
Okay, Jim said we need to hold this out, so we'll do it in May.
Do it in May.
Either that or we can put it under agenda for next week.
For next week, there you go.
That'll work. Okay. Not on the agenda. Josh?
Just wanted to report, just quickly, that in the last two weeks we've had three heroin arrests in the city. Recently is Sunday, Officer Mahan did a traffic stop, got a substantial amount of cash, saved like around $6,000 or $7,000 with a pretty good substantial amount of heroin out of the traffic stop. And we impounded the car and obviously went to jail. And then today, we did a search warrant on residents and we got heroin, meth, recovered some stolen guns, some marijuana, stuff like that, so they're doing some pretty good work, the officers, on trying to get that problem, you know, the fight against the heroin and drug problem that's going on right now in central Wisconsin.
Stolen guns are from burglaries?
Uh, I'm not sure where they were from, we just recovered them, I didn't, I just know that they were stolen, I was told they were stolen, I don't know where they were stolen from or whatnot, so.
Sean told me it was county cases, so I don't know, he didn't seem aware, but.
Are these all local residents or?
The Sunday arrest were a couple out of Stevens Point and obviously the search warrant was in the city of Nacusa, so they're local.
Yeah.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah. Tell me guys this, do you see?
That's great. Anything else, Josh?
No.
Okay. And I'd like to congratulate you on your gold ball trophy.
Yes.
Dancing.
Dancing with the stars.
Yeah.
Fred Astaire.
Yeah.
Next step is TV.
That's what I'm going for.
You're going for TV?
Yeah, they rejected me earlier.
There you go, that's it, we got it right.
My partner's not here, so.
Larry, can you step up for him? No.
Good work for the team. Not if you wanted to dance again.
Yeah, Larry, you know.
Good, good work, that's good.
Oh, it was fun, it was fun.
I mean, good work for a blade department.
Oh, yeah.
That too.
Yeah, that was fun too.
Going on, like a motion and a second to accept the police department's annual report. A motion, a second to approve the police department's annual report, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
Yeah.
Going into the rest of the monthly reports, first is the police department's monthly report. A motion, a second. A motion, a second to approve the police department's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Public Works monthly report. There's a motion, a second to approve the Public Works Report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is ambulance department's monthly report. Motion, a second. Motion, a second to approve the ambulance department's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is fire department's monthly report. A motion, a second. There's a motion, a second for the fire department's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is billing inspector's report. A motion, a second for the billing inspector's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is community centers monthly report. A motion, a second for community centers. Motion, a second, for the community centers report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
He's trying to throw me on.
Next is airport commission report.
I...
Did we get one?
There was one last week.
Yes, we did.
Anything to report?
Oh, um, we are right now in the middle of redoing our five-year plan. Or not redoing it. We have to submit it every, every year to update it and how we move things around. And that's going pretty good. We're working with Town of Rome right now, talking, we're talking with them about their plans down there and how it's going to affect the airport. Hopefully, talking with Beer to join the, join the commission, bring a little extra, extra on in there. There was talk of a dog park up there. That hasn't, nothing's happened with that so far, as of yet. Just looking at building a new hangar, a different hangar, whether it be private or public, you know, us building it or someone else building it, that's kind of a, that's just kind of a something out in the future type thing. But it's going pretty good. It's been very good. It's been busy.
Are there any events coming up?
Nothing, not in the immediate future, but in June, July, August, yeah. I'll keep posted as, as we go with that. I try to keep Joe on whatever I get from them. I send it to Joe and try to get it, get it out. But if you've got any questions, if you ever want to take a tour, come on up. They're, we're willing to, you know, if I've got time off, I'll take you through. We can all do it, so. Any one of the four commissioners or the, or the administrator that's there. So it's, it's working out really well. It's, it's the new commissioner, our new administrator's doing a very excellent job, getting his feet wet, well, getting his feet soaked, actually. He's doing, getting a lot done with X. It's working out.
Brad, do you know what the completion, estimated completion date for our new golf course?
No, I do not. I heard it was 2017. First, first swinging's going to be done in 2017. Not know if that's been pushed back or not. I know that they're already planning the second course, and there's talk of five, up to five courses. Now, that's five 18-hole courses. Now, like I said, that's just what we've heard lately, within the last months or so. Now, like I said, hopefully they get the, the first course up and running in the seventh, spring of '17. Cool if it come up in fall, '16, but I don't, I don't know how far along there. We didn't have anybody in the last, from Rome at the last meeting, so we didn't get a chance to ask.
Pardon?
Takes time.
Yeah, it does. It's, you know, it's, but they love to, you know, the sand is perfect. Everything is great. The one over in, they had one in Oregon that they built, if they did like, and I'm just using numbers off the top of my head, if they had 9,000 rounds just as a number, they would break even, all right? These guys had like 15,000 or 14,000 rounds. It was way more than what they needed. So if it was 3,000, it was 6,000. It was, it was really good. So they, they're really good at what they do. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be really nice.
One thing going off of the golf course, the chamber puts on every so often the Business after Hours events, and they had one last week. And the next one is in May, and it's actually, the Town of Rome is putting it on, and part of it is tour of the golf courses. So, I mean, what is it?
Last year?
Uh, I went last year. I think it was in August or September. I took a tour. So, but when, I don't know if everybody gets the emails from the, from the chamber. If not, I'll, when I get one, I'll send it to...
Terry Brakers Club?
Maybe. Got a motion, a second, to approve the airport commission. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is the bill.
All right. We all have the three packets of bills. Anybody have any questions on those? Otherwise, we got camera operator, $20. Council, $520. Mayor, salary, $600. Ways and Means, $250. Public Works, $250. Public Safety, $500. Wage and Salary, $250. And Prop and Rec, $250.
Who's going to pay the bills? Second.
Go call. Schultz?
Yes.
I go, yes. Garrett Coon?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yeah.
Woyak?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
And Wenzel?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else?
Most good. Your...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Richard?